...thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-six. The big reason for that is property taxes. And you go back and look in November, December, and January, our property tax collection was significantly higher than our budget. And it's just because this is a due date of December, and that's why it's that skewed. Actual expenses came in under budget at one million, thirty thousand, three hundred and four dollars versus the target of one million, thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Another good month of coming in under budget. The monthly variance of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and the year-to-date variance on our reserves drawdown, which is actually a plus because of the fiscal year of two million, two hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars. Looking at our key revenue drivers, our top four, real property. This is a property taxes target. If averaged out over twelve months will be four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But again, you look at November, December, and January, we're significantly over the target. Looking at LOST, target is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars to meet our budgetary needs. We came in at two hundred and sixty-three thousand, twenty-one dollars. That's probably a record. It's a very strong local economy with sales tax. You can see that this, the whole ten months, we've been green. EMS fees, we missed the target by fifteen thousand and some change. The target is ninety-five thousand, eight hundred dollars. We came in at eighty thousand, two-eleven. And then the last one is a vehicle title fee. This is the TAVA tax, the seven percent title fee. Target is sixty-two thousand. It came in at a hundred and fifteen thousand. As you can see, it's been green all year, and people still buying cars. Strong revenues, economy's still strong, and our expenses are under control. So, good job to the department heads, our county administrator, and colleagues on the board for maintaining some policies. Any questions on the financial dashboard? If not, we'll move on to commissioners' reports, District Two.
I just appreciate the job of our law enforcement, first responders, fire department, and our county employers are doing, and that's all I got.
District Three.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that the Lady Angler's Bass Club, they had a real good turnout. I think they had twenty-three votes in this session. Chairman and I went down for the weigh-in, and my hats off to Chamber of Commerce. Those folks were really bragging about our Chamber of Commerce, and we appreciate the job these guys do. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
District Four.
Yeah, I got a little bit I'd like to say. I'd like to also say what Mr. Teasley says about our first responders, our EMS, all that. They do a wonderful job. Appreciate that. Appreciate them being out there every day. But you know, along with that, we got a lot of people that works in these offices, administrators that keeps all the paperwork square, all the road work done, and also shop that keeps everything running. I think we need a little pat on the back occasionally, too, and I appreciate all of them. That's all I got to say, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to old business, item twelve A Amendment to Article Seven, Utilities, Facility Installations, the first reading. This is an action that the board took and asked county administrator to make some changes to this and replace some county planning director with road superintendent. This primarily involves utilities being installed in the right-of-way. Everybody's aware, we've had complaints about contractors doing water lines specifically have been on topic of discussion. So, with that change being made or the replacement from county planning director to road superintendent, can I get a motion? We take this as a first reading.
I make that motion? Does this be our first reading?
I have a motion by Commissioner Teasley, their second.
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Sayer, that we take this as a first reading on the amendment to this ordinance. For those of you who are watching at home, it takes three before this is final. Any more discussion from the board?
Yeah, I got some things I'd like to say. And I say this about every ordinance, and I'll say it about this. I feel all ordinances have a purpose and intent of what its intent stated. This ordinance says more about standards that we could have. Maybe something like the purpose of this ordinance is to establish a policy and standard for installation of utilities in the county right-of-ways. The name of the ordinance says utilities, facilities, installation permit. It should be changed and mentioned that what it does, and it should establish standards for utility construction, repair, or extension of utilities. The ordinance should have details on standards required for road cuts, road bowls. Do they need casings for underground road crossings? They could be based on size. I know that when they put water lines across the road, now the small ones tap, they just pop a hole in there and put them under. I'm not saying that they need casings, but some of the bigger ones do, because if a pipe were to rupture under that road, it's gonna wash that road out. If it's got casing up on it, the water flow out each end into the ditch. I don't know what the proper depth for large pipes would be under the road. The main thing, and I think that brought this up, and you know, I had pictures on it that we probably don't have on the computer right now, but where do we install hydrants, valves? Well, all these things are in the ditches, so how are we gonna maintain the ditches when we got hydrants and valves right in the center line of the ditch? To me, that makes no sense. And I know that we have some roads that have very little right-of-way, but we need to come up with something. I've also known that, I've seen roads that vibrated across by putting phone lines, utility lines in, they go right across paved road and see the little pucker on it. So, all of that needs to be done, and we need to dictate where water meters are gonna be set, or they're gonna be set on the right-of-way, or will they be set on private property? I don't know how they do that now.
In the right-of-way.
But that interferes sometimes. You ever gonna do anything, your meter's gonna be sitting right in your way.
Good on you. I'm sorry? This is the first reading. If you've got something you want to see, put in here. Mark it up, bring it back to the next meeting, and we'll get it in there.
Well, I'm telling you that.
Or you need to submit it.
I will. I'll be glad to submit. Ditches should not install, you shouldn't install rocks in ditches. Sediment will build up, and right-of-way mowers will hit, and it'll also create the buildup of the ditches. Also, a statement about large rocks or anything they dig up. I know sometimes they'll leave big rocks on the roadway, they need to get those up. Do something with them. A lot of your homeowners might would take a rock and feed it around there.
That's the purpose of the post-review, and that's why this was changed to the road department supervisor. There's a pre-construction meeting where they're gonna go out and look, and then there's a post-construction meeting where they'll go out and before that contractor should get paid by the water authority, and that's who we're talking about specifically here pretty much, the road department supervisors got to agree that everything was right. So, we've got those things in place. This is a utility.
Well, you don't mention rocks and stuff like that in the laws. You know, if you're gonna have a checkoff, you gotta have a checkoff, and you gotta have it lifted. You can't just go out there and use your judgment on the checkoff.
We have empowered a professional individual to be able to do this. This is part of this ordinance is to allow him.
And also, it don't have a criteria which you can put a stop-work order in. Does that exist in this ordinance? I don't believe it does. It says you can have a stop-work order, but it don't have the criteria listed of which you can have a stop-work order for. And I don't know if the law or anybody else says, but all utilities should have specific tracers installed. I don't know exactly.
They have to do that.
Yeah, they have to do that. That's a state or federal law, wanting to have to be a tracer.
So, I have a motion and a second, that we take this as a first reading. Any more discussion? If you want to submit those for changes, that's up to you.
Mr. Chairman, I just make one observation. As you know, I represent the water authority as well, and they do not want to put hydrants in ditches, period. They don't want to put water lines in ditches, period. But, as you know, most of the roads in Hart County were not engineered. They developed where people put them, you know, going from one place to another. And there are quite a few roads in Hart County that have no deeded right-of-way. And as you know, when it doesn't have a deeded right-of-way, then basically it is a ditch-to-ditch right-of-way. And while I know the water authority would certainly prefer to never use a ditch, sometimes that's all that can be done. Now, there is, the alternative would be rather costly, and that would be to acquire private owners right-of-way. And, you know, we've been, the water authority's been successful in people helping with that from time to time when it needed to be done. But if it would be a standard requirement, then it'd just be ready, it may cost more. I just make that observation.
Well, you know, most people probably would give you a few inches of property to put the meter on.
That used to be the case.
Not anymore.
No, there's possibility.
All right. I can't remember who made the motion. Who did say?
Frankie did.
I did.
Martin, second.
I have a motion and a second that we take this as a first reading to change of this ordinance. Any more discussion? Public comment? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item twelve B, purchase of mower for recreation department. This was done under state contract. There's two mowers that were looked at out here. John Deere was eight thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and seventy-three cents, and Kubota was eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Recommendation is to use SPOS five proceeds to purchase the John Deere mower.
I make a motion.
Anything you want to add to that?
No. These mowers are identical, are the same models that we had. We checked them so we could buy one set apart for both mowers. Both of them good mowers, just the John Deere's about three hundred dollars cheaper. That's the only difference.
For the John Deere mower, that's my motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer. We move forward with the purchase of the John Deere mower on state contract. Their second. Second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion? Public comment on this expenditure? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item on the agenda, we talked about at the last meeting, is executive session breach of confidentiality. State law and the open records, open meetings law allows boards and authorities to go into executive session to disclose or to discuss confidential information. There are several things that this board can go into executive session for. One being personnel. In personnel, the matter has to be investigated in the open. The board can go into executive session with a vote by the board to discuss actions that it wants to take. But the board must come back out of executive session and vote in the open on the actions to take with personnel. Litigation, if there's a lawsuit or something that's going on, the board can go into executive session to discuss that situation, but at the end, if the thing's getting ready to be settled, the board has to come back out and vote in the open. So, all action has to be taken in the open. There are some tax matters, especially when you're dealing with proprietary information that are confidential and cannot be discussed in the open. And then there's real estate. The reason for real estate is to prevent somebody from doing something that the government may be looking at, if we're gonna build something, we're looking to purchase something. It's there to protect the taxpayers. And, you know, in our July fourteenth meeting, we entered into executive session, and there was some discussion that a commissioner, and I'm gonna ask that commissioner to speak it up. I'll be happy to call a name if I have to. But there was a confidentiality breach, bottom line. Calls made to our federal elected officials. There was a discussion with the county administrator and reminded that commissioner that there was supposed to be confidentiality. And then a week or so later, I had people asking me about it. And it's very difficult to answer questions when somebody asks you about something and knows word-for-word what was said in executive session. And I basically said, I can't discuss that. And there's reasons for that. We could be courting industries, and we are, and when we have individuals who are in leadership positions and can't maintain confidentiality, it really hurts the credibility of this whole There's private investors looking to make investments in this community, and there's confidentiality breaches, things that should have never happened. Right, wrong, or indifferent, it did. And I'm gonna ask if anybody wants to speak up and man up about it.
You done it?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
You want to speak up?
I will when you get done.
Okay. It's something not to take lightly. It's something very serious. And as our county attorney has advised us in the past as well, it's a violation of our oath of office. I have reminded on more than one occasion, when we're in executive session, this stuff remains confidential. You put the county in a, it could very well put us in a situation where there's a lot of liability. I asked county attorney at the last meeting to look into what can be done, and I think it's time that we go ahead and move forward. Commissioner Carter, I'm gonna name, went out and disclosed information that was discussed in executive session. I have went and talked to some of the individuals who this information was discussed with. I know there's another commissioner on the board who discussed this with the same group of people, and that bond of trust is broken. And it's at the expense of the colleagues on this board, as well as the citizens of this county that we represent. We take an oath of office, and we're elected to leadership positions, and there's an expectation that these things be kept confidential. That's why the law allows us to do what it allows us to do. That being said, I'm gonna give Commissioner Carter an opportunity to respond. I think before I do that, I will give Commissioners Teasley and Sayer an opportunity as well to say anything that they have to say. But we want to understand what all was said, why it was said, and what was the purpose of it? Why did you want to breach that? Anybody?
You know, I agree with what you're saying. When we're doing executive session, you hope that what we talk about in there is not made public unless we come out here and, you know, debate on it.
And also, I'd like to, you know, we've met with the IBA in executive session, we've met with law enforcement. Even the last meeting we had, we had our district attorney in these meetings. I would like for these people to be able, feel free to know that they're in executive session, and this issue is gonna stay here. Because there's some sensitive issues that we discuss sometimes that don't, that do not, and it's not like we're trying to hide anything, because anything that's discussed in executive session is eventually gonna be brought out and voted on. But there's a timeframe there that we have to remain confidential about it. So, I would just like to be able to restore the confidence in these authorities and all that. You know, we can go to the Hart County Board of Commissioners, and we can meet in executive session, and everything's gonna stay there. That's what, that's what I think our goal, we should try to achieve. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And at the time, just to follow, just to kind of reiterate that, everything we discuss pretty much so in executive session, if we move forward with anything, eventually it's gonna be released in the open anyway. All votes have to be done in the open. So, any action that we take as a board would be done right here in the open, and it would be on TV as we film all of our meetings. So, with that said, Commissioner Carter, we would like some answers. I would like to know why it was done, and I guess we can go from there.
All right. It seems that the chairman wants me to lose my secret security clearance, as he said I breached confidentiality on the issue that according to the Corps of Engineers is public information. I have a letter that nowhere on it says top-secret classified, do not disclose. That comes from the Corps of Engineers. I'd also like to ask who decides on what is top-secret classified information, and what criteria is used to make this determination? What criteria does this meet to deem it top-secret classified information? I remember back years ago, working on the mega ramp that we brought into this county, none of that was ever classified information. It was always in the open. It was openly discussed, and it brought many fishing tournaments to the county. Our own school system now has fishing tournaments there. Would this be happening without this mega ramp? What's the economic impact of this? Can you believe we now have a recreational sport that does not have a boss involved?
Commissioner, please focus on the breach of confidentiality. We're not worried about what happened in the past.
You said you wanted to read.
We're on answers.
I'm gonna get a reading, and if you'll shut up a little while, I'll explain.
Let me explain to you. We want to know, and anything, as you well know, this discussed in executive session is confidential. Is that not a fact, Commissioner Carter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We will get to the bottom of it.
All right. I may not be no legal scholar, but I know the difference in right and wrong. I also know when my laws are lies, and that's with the citizens of this county. All the business that could have devastating loss of their livelihood due to these potential closures, these people need to know this possible impact to their bottom line, but also to their recreational opportunities to spend time with their friends, families on this lake. Many camp locally, camping is a big business, and is usually done closer to home. How many businesses could be impacted by this? Campers sales, camper service techs, groceries, restaurants, gas stations, convenience stores, retail stores, the companies that service these stores, electrical suppliers, the camp hosts whom they, they stay here and eat here and buy here. Everyone in this county will be affected in one way or another. The Department of Revenue has Hart County has had six thousand, three hundred and four trailers. I don't know how many of them's campers, because they all listed in trailer, but I can assure you there's a lot of them. But I can assure you if it's quite a lot of that number. There's also eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine trucks. Reckon how many of these trucks are used to pull campers? So, we see all kinds of impact here. Three B was spent on camping equipment in 2017 alone. In 2018, campers shipped three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and one conventional campers, eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-fifth-wheel, five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-class B camper van. Here are some of the economic impact on the local economy, just to show you what the impact can be to our communities. Close by, Tugelo State Park, they have a visitation of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-six. The overnight impact of that is seven million, nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars, seven million, nine hundred and eleven thousand, twenty-four dollars. The day trip impact is twenty-five million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and nine. Total tourism impact is thirty-three million, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, thirty-three million, three hundred and seventy-four, Aunt Uti, big number, and six hundred and thirty-three. Thirty-three million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-three. The local job impact is three hundred and ten. That brings in two million, seven hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars a month in Franklin County in that area. Moxon Creek, which would be more in line with the campground around here, got fifty-three sites, eighty-five thousand, forty-one visitor, two million and forty thousand overnight impact. Day trip impact, six million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. Total tourism impact is eight million, six hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and one dollars. Local jobs, eighty. That brings in a local impact of seven hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and thirty-three. Hart County tourism dollars in 2018 was twenty-five million, payroll of six point fifty-four million, jobs two hundred and sixty, state tax revenue was one point sixteen million, the county tax revenue was six hundred and sixty thousand. Hart County is the second lowest number in the Georgia mountain region, and that is on Banks County is the next lowest county. Franklin County, our next-door neighbor, is forty-four million, two million, forty-four point two million dollars, or zero, two million dollars. We have something here a lot of people do not have, and that's Lake Hartland, which has so much potential to grow, but it seems we are going backwards by losing campground. They have been here for years. This county, in a letter dated January fifteenth, 2014, requested to lease Milltown Campground. Had people believing it was going to be open in August, around August 2014, but it was closed. Why was it shuttered and allowed to go to park? Did anyone look at the economic impact on closing this park for our community? This was in a, this come out in the October eighth, 2013 meeting, when someone in public comment asked county and city to do a joint study of feasibility. Was that top-secret classified info then? The chamber cited the loss of over eleven million dollars that supports a hundred and thirty jobs by the closure of Hart State Park. Reckon how much finances have been lost in these six years Milltown has been closed in Hart State Park also? Your support and assisting the city is crucial to allowing this project to move forward and increase the recreational economic development opportunities for our citizens. Letter from the BOC to Assistant to the President. That comes from this board. Now, the city's dealing with the state and the Corps for years. Has never been top-secret classified, and they took a heck of a situation and stood firm and make it happen. To them, I say, thank, good job. So, if this board feel like it need to drag my good name through the mud for standing for the citizens in this county, then so be it. I will stand for transparency in anything. Now, I wanted to explain to me what's a law I have broken.
I'll be happy to. If you look at Code Section forty-five dash ten dash three, Code of Ethics for Board Members, this is official code of Georgia annotated, and I'm not saying you broke the law, but I want you to understand, if you look at paragraph eight, "Never engage in other conduct which is unbecoming to a member or which constitutes a breach of public trust." I don't feel like we've got an answer.
But I'm not done.
Well, I want to say a few things. You asked me to, so I'm going to. I'm not gonna belabor this point. This was a, this was a purposely done deal. You even went as far as to handing out flyers at the campground. You told people who were employees of the Corps of Engineers what was gonna happen, what the Corps' plans were. These people found out from a third-party source, and we don't even know that what was said is even gonna happen. So, you got the community, listen to me. Listen to me. I've got the floor. You're out of order. I'll give you the floor in a minute. But there's a purpose for this, and things could still be worked out, I don't know. But there was an opportunity to do the right thing, but no, we have to go out and we have to do it. And I can tell you that your colleagues on this board don't take this lightly. And if you don't want to say that you give out these flyers and encourage people to call, and all the things that you did, this was not.
I'm not denying it.
This was not, did you purposely do this? Let me ask you that.
I gave them people the flyer.
Did you purposely do it?
Yes, sir, I sure did.
All right. That's what I want to, I want to ask our county attorney to see if we can get the Attorney General's office to investigate this, of what options we have, our third party. I think we need to understand the magnitude of it. I think going forward after tonight, that each of us signs a written promise to maintain confidentiality of all executive sessions, or going forward, you will be excluded by a majority vote of this board if this happens again.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a point, too, that I think all these concerns he mentioned.
They're relevant right now.
We're all, we all share these concerns, and by you going out and telling these things, it makes us look like, well, they don't care. That's the, that bothers me.
I never said that.
Ricky, you never.
I know, but by going out and telling these people these things, like we don't care.
But you've breached confidentiality before, personnel matters. It's gotten back to us, but it's gonna stop after this one.
I don't know what I've ever done.
This one will stop it, I promise you. So, go ahead, Commissioner Carter.
All right. This is the law that I read. Chapter fourteen, Title fifty, fourteen dash three, excluded proceedings. Seventy-two compliant with other provisions of this chapter, executive session shall be permitted. It does not say it is required on real estate subjects. And three, the things that can be talked about in this episode is authorize the settlement of any matter which may be properly discussed in the executive court of paragraph. Authorize negotiation to purchase disposed of or leased property. We was doing none of that. It was just brought to our attention.
The possibility of doing something about it.
Authorize, enter into a contract first. We was doing none of that. So, I broke no law, and I'm completely transparent with the people in this county. So I broke no law, and I'm completely transparent with people in this county, but deserve to know as soon as possible. These businesses have invested interest in this county, and they need to know as soon as possible this could happen before they make any bad judgments on their business. That's why I done this. If you want an explanation, that's as good a one as I can get, and that's exactly the reason why I done it.
I'm not satisfied, there's more to it. You lied to this board. You lied to these, your colleagues. And you want to say that? You want to tell everybody what you told us?
What did I tell you?
You know what you told us.
When?
You said here, just now, that you purposely did it.
Yeah, I know.
What did you tell, what did you tell your board members? You've already told everything else that's been discussed in executive session.
What did I tell my board members? I ain't said nothing. I don't know exactly where that question go.
We all know. Marshall, did he lie to you? Frankie, did he lie to you?
When the question was asked before.
What did y'all ask him before?
About your breach of confidentiality.
And did I ever deny it?
What did you say?
Just now, only?
What did you say?
I've never denied it.
It's not, it's not, what did you say, Ricky?
I'll be honest with you, I don't know, I don't know what you talking about. I just told you everything. I've been honest up front with you. I haven't lied to nobody.
That's not what you told us before.
Well, if I did, I'm going to make a statement. I don't know what you talking about.
Were you not warned before that this was confidential, before you went, after you contacted Doug Collins' office?
Yeah, Terry mentioned it was confidential, but I still disagree with being confidential information. The Corps of Engineers said-
What did you tell, what did you tell us when you were confronted about this?
I won't have to.
Does the words not come back to you? It's very clear to me what you said.
I don't have to.
Well, I think the third party investigation bring it out. I'm not going to say it. I'm not going to violate my oath of office. But that's not what you told us. But it's, it's a breach of trust.
I've been transparent.
It's, it's forever violated. There are other things that's going on in this county with investors and things like that, and it's a shame. There are people at the Corps who are on vacation, who are getting calls. It caused a total disruption, and even our credibility with the Corps is breached.
Well, what I've been told, the Corps has it's public information, it was not intended to be kept private.
If it was public information, it would have already been in the newspaper before it was brought to us. So you were under the newspaper, you've been running to Milltown and showing Milltown with the third parties without even talking to this board about it. This stuff is going to stop behind our backs. You want to talk about that one?
I'm behind your back. I told you everything I done. I'm not denying any of it.
Why don't you tell us about the thing at Milltown?
What about it?
You went and showed that to a third party, did you not?
Yep, sure did.
What did you tell us? You went and called every city council member, "We're going to talk about this here in just a minute," behind our back, wanting to set up a meeting.
I want to find this.
This board does not authorize you to do what you're doing, but we'll talk about that in a minute. Mr. Gordon, my understanding is this board, and based off of situations like this that have been handled in the past by other counties, there's been a precedent set that each member could sign an agreement to uphold confidentiality of any executive session material, and going forward, if a commissioner breaks that, can be excluded from the executive session. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that is certainly a way that it could be handled. The law doesn't provide any really clear direction. The law assumes that people will follow it. And there are counties, though, that do, on a yearly basis, have their members sign an ethical pledge. This is one thing that the County Water Authority does each year, where they identify any potential conflict that they might have, and pledge not to vote on any matter in which they might be conflicted. So there are county governments that do that as well, that on a yearly basis, you disclose conflicts and then agree that you won't vote on them, and you also, again, pledge confidentiality of confidential matters discussed in executive session. And then, if that should be breached, there are, there's at least one, if not more, counties that do provide for the penalty breach, the penalty for a breach of confidentiality to be either a fine or, if it continues, a, an exclusion from executive session. And that's a very stern remedy, and I wouldn't suggest that you do that unless there was just no other way to handle it. My suggestion is that maybe you let me write up a statement that would incorporate your oath of office, that would incorporate the state ethics code, and not just, not for any one of you, but for all of you. And in fact, if you wanted me to do the same thing, I'd be glad to, and maybe your upper management like Terry. But that is something that you could do that kind of keeps it uppermost in everybody's mind. I don't, I don't believe that Commissioner Carter did this in any malicious manner. I think he, and, but I don't really know why it was discussed outside of executive session, and especially if there were contacts made to federal employees and other political figures like the city. You know, typically that is done through the chairman or by the board voting and directing a commissioner to make a contact about a certain subject. And, and it's done that way for a reason. It's so that the actions of the Hart County Board of Commissioners stem from the collective knowledge and understanding and wisdom of the full county board of commissioners, rather than any one particular person. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's, sometimes it's hard to deal with this because a lot of people, particular politicians, they're in there, you know, they want to do something. They want to, you know, work something out. They want to do something for the good of the people. But it's always important to remember that when you make statements representing the Board of, Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners needs to be fully involved in that, and needs to make it clear what, what they, you know, where they're going with it, or what's their purpose in trying to discuss something. And the discussion that was held on this, there was information which was provided, it was discussed in an executive session, which gave it its own stamp of confidentiality. Certainly somebody could have sent an Open Records Act request to the Corps of Engineers, and if they knew what to ask for, they could probably get that letter. But that doesn't necessarily mean that your, or that your actions back here in executive session were therefore publicly discussable. They're not, unless and until you vote for that. And, you know, we've had in the past, I, we've had some commissioners who've had some difficulty with that. None, none on the board right now, but, or at least that I remember, but there have been some notable, there've been some things that have been let loose, and especially in the years where we were having such, such difficulty with the tax digest.
This situation was not a slip up. This was purposely done. To go and have pre-planted flyers and hand out to the camp staff and people who are camping and getting everybody in uproar. Something that had this situation been handled right, it would have been over, done with, whatever we're going to do, we announced it, boom, everybody's happy. But now, there's third parties involved. Multiple third parties are involved. That's why you have executive session, to keep that from happening. So if it all falls to pot, there's one person who can take that load on their shoulders for that breach of confidentiality, and that person's on this board. I'm going to make a motion that we have our county attorney draft a promise that ourselves, as well as our county administrator, sign to uphold confidentiality of executive sessions going forward. And if there's any violations or you don't sign it, you'll be excluded from the next executive session. And we won't have an executive session tonight till we get this in place.
I'll second.
In form of a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Chairman Dorsting, and a second by Commissioner Sayer. We have a county attorney draft a promise that we all sign to uphold confidentiality of all executive session material going forward, and if you don't sign it, you'll be excluded, and if you do violate it, you'll be excluded if the board votes to exclude you. Any more discussion, public comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Floyd, if you'll come forward.
I'll stand here.
If you can come over here, please.
You know, what I have to say is just real simple. I was kind of surprised that Hart County for County Commissioners didn't have a code of ethics that you sign off on every year. So y'all kind of mentioned that already, so you probably were taking that. But, you know, Georgia has a code of ethics for county commissioners, and so I wish you would consider having a code of ethics for county commissioners because it covers a lot more just than executive session. There's other things that it covers, and I think it help protect each individual member as a county commissioner, if you, if you did something like that. So that's how I answer.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to speak again, correct? Under regular public comment? I'll get the floor again.
Maybe.
Maybe?
Yeah.
No?
Depends on what you're going to speak about.
I've got a list, Joe. And I'm not trying to here to kick you with your pants down.
There's not going to be any, I mean, any personal attacks.
No, there's not going to be, I'm not here to kick you with your pants down. I know how that feels.
As long as, as long as-
This is, here's what I'm trying to figure out. You got up here and said you're supposed to conduct yourself, so if you go back to your notes and reread it, so you don't embarrass the county, and you got to do all this stuff right, and undoubtedly, since last year, August 6th, the Lord has sent the angel of integrity and doing right down to this Board of Commissioners, because it was nowhere present. So I want you to tell me that. No, no, I'm talking, no.
You can talk about-
I'm talking business. I want to know what you're doing.
You're out of order sitting there.
And I'll be back.
No, you won't.
Yeah.
No, you won't. You're allowed to talk on this particular topic that we're talking about. No, you're not. You're talking about personal attacks. You had an opportunity to speak on behalf of what the motion was to make. You're out of order. You're out of order. Anybody else's public comment? Not all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried unanimously. Next item of business is item 13A. City's request for a meeting, we've talked about that too. Unless, I'll say what, this is another situation where this board was not involved. My understanding is the actions taken by commissioner kind of led some folks to believe this board wanted to meet, you know? We talked about meeting back when the discussions were going on, but the board's position here, unless somebody, anybody speak up, is that Hart State Park cannot be legally annexed in its current state, the way things are. And our position is it can't be done, so there's no need for us to meet on this. If they come up with a different plan or whatever, then, then we'll, we'll meet. Anybody's got anything different for that? Please speak up.
I never told anybody on there that this board wanted to meet. That was just a misconception.
That's what I was told.
Well, you were totally wrong.
So.
I told them the only way we're going to solve this is sit down on top of each other.
We tried to do that, Ricky, whenever this thing first kicked out, but since then, we found out it was illegal, what they were trying to do, and therefore, you know, I don't see any need to make it back up again.
I'm not going to sit here and judge the legality of what they're trying to do. That's between them and their attorney.
All right, so to get a motion that we contact the city and let them know that our position is it can't be legally done, there's no need to meet on it. I'm going to put that in motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second, motion by Commissioner Sayer, and second by Commissioner Teasley. Any more discussion, public comment? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carried three to one. Commissioner Carter abstained, I mean, against. You coming down to public comment, if somebody would like to address the board? Mr. Turner? No, no personal attacks, just?
No. My name's Chuck Turner. I live in Commissioner Carter's district. And this thing that was brought up tonight really caught me by surprise. I'm not going to address him individually, but what I am going to say is that the people of Hart County place our trust from our votes in a board for them to make decisions for us. And when they go in that office right there to have their executive session, it's not why something is discussed outside of that, it's that something that's discussed outside of that that is the problem. And I don't know about everybody else, but I did not hear one reason that something was discussed outside of that executive board meeting, and I am completely, like you guys, I am not satisfied with that. That's all I got.
Mr. Gordon, you and I had spoken earlier today about a third party investigating this and getting to the bottom of it. We talked about the Attorney General's Office. I've had discussions with the district attorney as well. It's not really a criminal matter, so it's more. But I do, I do think we need to understand what's going on, what all was said, so we truly understand. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'll, I'll put that in form of a motion, because I know other people feel that same way, that we authorize a county attorney to look into contacting the Attorney General's Office and getting a third party to investigate this breach of confidentiality. It's a serious matter. It impacts us on our economic development and a lot of other things that we have going on, so is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Commissioner Sayer. Any more discussion, public comment on this?
And for the reason, like I said, Mr. Chairman, it's, it's that people need to be confident in what we're doing. We do not go out and do things on our own, and like I said, we all share these same concerns of economic impact, but we got to follow the rules. We got to do what we're supposed to do, and, and to break a trust of confidentiality, it really bothers me.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried three, Commissioner Carter abstained, three of it. Yes, sir.
Oh, I got something on the other matter.
Okay, if you'll come forward.
You may not remember. I live in your district. It's been about four months back, so, I mean, but I live over there in Goldmine Community, off Old Hendricks. A trucking company, a commercial trucking company was allowed to move across the road from us. And back when they first started grading off, and all, that's when I called your office, and you told me there wasn't anything we could do about it or whatever. Well, it's getting really outrageous over there now. It's, the guy started off, and I'm pretty sure he probably lied to somebody to get permission, you know, the permits or whatever, to do whatever it was he was going to do over there. He actually came and lied to everybody over there and told us that all he was doing was putting a shop in to work on his trucks. And if the trucks was over there, they wouldn't be running in and out because they was going to be broke to be fixed. Well, now he's using it as a drop yard. And trucks, I have video on my phone, trucks all hours of the night, running in and out constantly, all the noise, banging, and all. During the day, it's no problem, but I mean, when it gets up to midnight, 1, 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning- But, I mean, when it gets up to midnight, 1, 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, it's a really big problem with our kids who have to go to school. And our five-year-old, she has Usher's type 2 syndrome, and she's almost completely deaf. She's legally blind right now. But, you know, to me, a younger deaf person can feel a vibration quicker than somebody with perfect hearing can hear, you know? So it really does bother her and affect her in a way to where she jumps into bed with mom and dad, and then everybody's up. Our 11-year-old, she's woke up four or five times a night. It's just getting ridiculous, the way he's doing over there. Last night at 10:30, I actually had to call the sheriff's department out to go get them to go over there to get him to shut down one of the trucks that he has running over there with straight pipes on it that was creating so much racket, we couldn't even go sleep. It, it's just getting ridiculous. And the roadway over there, there's cracks already there, but with the trucks running in and out, the cracks are even getting bigger. So that's gonna cost, you know, the county, I know it's gonna cost the county money. Then wherever he gets all the trucks in there, he won't get in there, all the runoff from the truck, the oil, the grease, the diesel fuel that's running off, when it rains, it's gonna wash back there in that freshwater stream that's behind his property. Then it's gonna bend our wheels. Then the county's gonna have to put water down through there. Then it's gonna cost us money to tap onto the water. It's just concerns that we have right after one, right after another, with him being in there. He's not being a very good neighbor. I mean, there's gotta be something that can be done about it. I mean, if you, if you can't zone it to where it's residential land only or whatever, I'm not saying zone land or whatever against farmers or anything like that or nothing, 'cause some people think, oh, you're trying to go against a farmer. No, I'm not. I'm just, it's ridiculous for him to be in a residential community, right there where he's at. And causing all the noise and the aggravation that he's causing and the grief he's causing for everybody, it's just ridiculous. Something's gotta be done.
Well, we, we don't have his zone in here in the county.
I, yeah, I understand that.
So, I mean, it's his property. He can basically do what he wants to. We have looked at it. Terrell's been over there. Code enforcement folks have been over there. Right now, I don't know that there's anything we can do. We'll try to talk to him.
It would even be okay with us if he operated during normal business hours. I mean, we ain't got a problem with him being there.
I understand. It's the time of night.
It's, I mean, it's just ridiculous. I mean, I got video, even the employees that work for him, when they leaving their personal cars, I got a video of a pickup truck leaving out from over there the other night. The speed limit was 25. I guarantee he was running 50.
There's no speed limit on that road.
Yeah, it's 25 on that first sign right there when you first turn in. It's 25 mile an hour. My wife got a ticket on it, and they said it was 25 mile an hour. It's, there's a sign on it that says 25 right there when you first turn in.
It's not on your list.
But it's, I mean, it's just ridiculous, the amount of havoc that he's calling over in the neighborhood and disturbing all of us. It's just, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, 'cause when you talked to me, it was gonna be a shop.
Yeah, that's what he, he even, that's the reason it metal down there. That's the reason I said you probably wouldn't remember me, because after I got off the phone with you, shortly after that, he came and talked to me and my wife, and he said all it's gonna be is a shop. So we was okay with that. But now, it's a hub for trucks. There's trucks running in and out, out of there. I got, I got videos I can show you. I mean, I can show all of you. I mean, it don't matter, but I can show you the videos and the timestamp on the video on my phone of what time, I mean, sometime there's eight trucks running in and out over there at night.
I don't know that there's a whole lot we can do.
I mean, if we could get something put on there where he operates during normal business hours, it would be good.
And, and we'll, we'll have to look into it.
I mean...
It's not, it's not that easy. And I'm gonna tell you why it's not that easy, because you've got other, this is an agricultural community. So you've got poultry farms who operate as far as the light hauls during the night. You've got feeding trucks that operate during the night. Those are businesses, and we can't, we can't pick on one, but we'll see what we can do. I don't know what the answer is.
I understand what you're talking about with that, 'cause I, I used to work, I'm a truck driver myself, you know? Not only that, after he gets the shop built up, you know, I mean, all the runoff it's gonna cause and all them problems it's gonna cause for the county. But it's, it's not just that. It's the, the amount of trucks he has running in and out. I, I can understand a light haul truck going down the road, or a feed truck going into a farm to put chicken feed in, or a light haul leaving out to go out. That's not an everyday thing, constant, everyday thing. This is constant and everyday.
We'll, we'll look into it, and I can't promise you we can do anything.
Well, I mean, I would appreciate if it's something, if y'all could figure out something that could be done, because it's ridiculous.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else's public comment? There will be no public, personal attacks or anything. If you wanna address this board, you can, Mr. Cagle, but you're not gonna hijack this meeting. There's not gonna be any personal attacks.
That's okay. I've got 11 items.
You've got five minutes.
Is there, is this a new thing, or about a time period? Is this something you're starting tonight for me?
It's in the agenda, in the ordinance.
Okay, well, that's fine. Okay.
And the first personal attack, you're out of order.
I'm not gonna tag nobody. Don't start my time now. Right now. I've got a question about conflict of interest concerning Frankie Teasley voting on matters concerning his private property that backs up what y'all were discussing earlier. Whether it's a good idea, bad idea, I feel that the commissioner should have recused himself from any vote, since his property backs up to that. Is there a reason he was allowed to vote? That's just a question.
It was disclosed. Is that not everything that looks like it is a conflict? But I don't ask, it, it disclosed.
Okay. Item two, when is this Board of Commissioners gonna pay back Bowersville $5,700 they took from them?
We didn't take any money from them, sir.
You owe them $5,700.
I don't owe them anything. This board owes them nothing. Let me ask you something. Your wife was on that council.
Yes.
When they voted to put those speedbreakers down...
My time doesn't count while you're talking.
I'm just asking you a question. You're bringing this up. You want, you're asking me questions.
I just don't wanna lose my time. Okay.
Your time does count. But you asked a question, you're gonna get an answer, just like you just did before. When they voted to put those speedbreakers down, where did they vote for the funds to come from?
They voted they was gonna do it with SPOSS money.
It's not a true statement, sir.
Okay. They gonna pay for it, didn't get reimbursed. That's what they did.
And you, you heard us tonight, when we did an expenditure tonight, we voted to take the money out of SPOSS 5. So we said upfront, when we made this expenditure tonight, the funds were gonna come out of SPOSS 5.
Okay.
Those, those speedbreakers, number one, were never voted on for the money to be taken out of SPOSS. They went back after the fact and tried to go back and get a reimbursement for SPOSS proceeds, so...
Not that's right, but were the speedbreakers voted on legally by the town of Bowersville?
That's not my, that's not my, our point.
Okay, since you led the charge to have them pulled up, and it's a madhouse up there now, what is this county commission gonna do about making the citizens of Bowersville safe that live on East Main Street?
You have a city council in Bowersville that's responsible for that. This board has worked with the city council of Bowersville. When you go back and you look at those speedbreakers that were put down in the emergency services corridor with no regard whatsoever to that being a main thoroughfare to and from the hospital, fire trucks or anything like that, this board got numerous complaints. We asked them to take them up. This board, myself or any of us, none of us voted to take those speedbreakers up. We did, however, say that if they voted to take them up, we would take them up at no cost.
Okay.
And why are we talking about that? Because you've made public statements about me personally getting them taken up. I didn't make that decision. That gentleman behind you made that decision. He's the one that the road department works for.
But that's a whole different issue, how y'all magically showed up that night. But I'm not gonna get personal. My next question, do you support Antifa and how they operate?
Well, no, I don't support Antifa.
Just a question, does this board support Antifa?
That's the problem.
Well, I knew I wouldn't get an answer, because that's how y'all acted that night. All right. I do have another item right here. For everyone. At the bottom right here. Like this. It is. A, for the commissioners, it's a Freedom of Information Act, of course. Concerning how legally y'all showed up in a few minutes. Thank you. Did I give somebody for Terrell's? My chance. I have one for Terrell.
Well, you can...
But anyways, the same thing.
You know, you've already, we've already responded to this one.
Now, this is a sample. It's worded different. It's not the same thing. It's been edited. Okay. I also have something. Let me hand that. It's interference regarding my property statute, which is a felony. It's about these speed bumps getting taken up. They damage the city's property, or another don't problem. That's a felony. And I'm gonna move quick, so I don't run out of time. Next. I'm gonna ask, and Joey, thank you for doing this tonight. You sort of paved the road for it.
You have time's up.
No, I'm saving this. I'll be independent investigation by the GBI, the district attorney's office, about the removal of those speed bumps. My family's been threatened.
You're out of order.
My family's been threatened. My life's been threatened. And, okay, I demand it. I'll be at the GBI, and also...
Contact the district attorney. If you think there's been a crime committed, go to the DA. Go to the DA. Thank you. You're not bad yourself.
I got drug tests everybody here tonight. You're gonna take this, just to pay all the commissioners...
You're out of order. This is not Bowersville. You're not taking over Bowersville, or Hart, Hart County, so... This is, anybody else's public comment?
I make a motion adjourned.
You don't have to rush to get these drug tests.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sayer, adjourned or seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. I'm adjourned. There will be no executive session tonight until this, this form is filled out.